Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. All rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty in every way, and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. The very first item on the agenda, second item on the agenda, is the homeowners associations. I don't see Rick Scardino here or online, Rick you're not online, or Don Bordeaux. Is Don Bordeaux here? All right, so the next item on the agenda is public comment. And what I'd like to do, oh, well, hold on, hold your thought, I'd like to just set this up. So, public comment, what I'd like to do is, for the public comment regarding the fire station, what I'd like to do is have that right before the agenda item, and limit it to maybe 10, 15 minutes, whatever we need for that. But now, what I'd like to do is take all other public comment. So, Chris, I think you have public comments, so please, please go ahead first.
Dana came over, or my pardon, came over and looked at the situation and agreed with the problem. And I just like to get an update because it seems no matter what you do, Abbott doesn't move on either the fence or the burn.
So, is anybody, are village managers online tonight, or Dana?
Well, that's mine, yeah. I haven't leave messages with them, and haven't heard a touch recently. They've said what kind of issues are there. So, I need to just set up a meeting with him and have him come out there with me and block it. So, I will call them tomorrow and just say, hey, let me show you, and we'll come with it.
Yeah, it's each one or more.
Chris Meyer.
Yeah, it's not new. I mean, it's not new.
Yeah.
They don't seem to want to move on anything.
We just got started.
So, yeah, so I'll call him directly tomorrow and set up, and if you don't hear from me by Friday, give me a call, you know, and take me along if I haven't, if I haven't gotten back to you.
I figured it wasn't your part, but I figured it could be your kicking, you know, Abbott's corporate retiree. And I misplaced your card, Mr. My card.
Okay, I can get you on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for public comment? Fire station will be done right before the fire station, so go ahead. Yep, Benjamin?
Yeah, well, I have two issues. First and foremost, I contacted the village, village manager, there's a tree directly across the street from my subdivision that's hanging on the AT&amp;T line right over 22, and that thing is gonna fall sooner or later. And we just wanted, my subdivision wants to know if, who, or if anybody can do something about it before that thing falls and hurts somebody.
Who's got that one? Are, do you have it, or?
So, we've reached out to them, Eva, who usually is our go-to, said they won't touch it if it's not, like, if it's a company wire, or if they're afraid that it's comment wire. But I can follow again with Kinga and AT&amp;T tomorrow and find out what's going on.
Because that's AT&amp;T wire, just comment wires on my side of the road, AT&amp;T is on the opposite side, and, you know, I mean, I'm not sure if you've seen this tree, but it's a 50-foot or this.
Is that the one at North Kruger?
Just over there for us.
Yes, been that way for years.
Well, there's another one that.
I know, I know, I look at it every day.
Yeah.
Yes.
Did it actually under wraps one too?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
So, it's a state problem technically.
See, I was gonna say, maybe we should get lined up and call.
So, we called comment, and they said it was AT&amp;T's, and I know Kinga reached out, this was just today, didn't find out, Kinga reached out to AT&amp;T today, I'll follow up tomorrow, with them to make sure they come out.
I know it's ultimately a state issue, but it's something that's gonna affect all of us in the village. And the only other question I had is, in the property annex to 4359, we noticed a bunch of trees tagged for removal, and we wanna know if they have a permit to do so.
You mean, is that the property where the temp is supposed to go?
Yes, where the, uh, non-residential.
It's a meditation.
Meditation temp?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so there's been no permits issue?
There's been no permits issue with that at all, so I don't know if that's, is there?
The marking may be as a result of a tree survey, which is often accompanied as part of an application, so I don't, I don't know the information, but that's not an uncommon thing to see the trees surveyed and marked.
Well, there's no permits.
Well, there's ribbons around them for removal, so this is not just like street plate or marking, so that's what we wanna know.
Okay, we can have someone go out and expect it and ask what's going on with the stuff. 4359, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, no.
All right, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Any other public comment? Nope? Okay, I thought you might have some.
No.
A birdie told me.
I'm here for the, I mean.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else that anyone wants? The fire station, we will do right before the fire station, so.
Does Art have to be brought into the meeting?
No.
No.
No, he's not an elected official, so. Art, you're being very quiet, you can hear us, right?
Yes, I can. I've just got myself on mute, so you can't hear me unless you ask me.
Okay, great, perfect, thank you. All right, moving right along then, the public safety reports, Lake County Sheriff? Lieutenant Kaiser, nothing? Okay. The fire department? No? All right. We're gonna move to the consent agenda then. There's several things on them. The consideration approval of the September 2023 bill warrant, consideration approval of the meeting minutes, September 26, 2023, subject to non-substantive revisions. There were some revisions, like the date was wrong at the header, which has been caught. It said September 23, it should've been September 26. There was a, Barbara Klip was spelled, I think, Klup or something like that.
Cook.
What was it? Cook, Cook, that's it. And so, that got, that got corrected, and I probably wasn't enunciating, so that's why that was. And then, on the motion for the SSA funds, Vic amended it to read something like, or to read, trustees moved to approve the release of the SSA funds today even without all submittals required under the agreement, provided that by March 1, 2024, there'll be a workshop to recommend changes to the agreement regarding the required information to be provided in the future, seconded by trustee O'Connor. So, that was moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee O'Connor. So, those were the changes to that.
I'm sorry, can I just clarify? I thought we discussed that not just hold a workshop, but have an agreement by March 1.
It was a recommendation for an agreement. I mean, I, I actually wrote that motion, and Bonnie was good enough to say, yes, that's the one I want. So, I was taking it from my notes. It was to hold meetings to make a recommendation for the agreement, because the village board ultimately will decide whether or not to approve those changes.
Fair, fair.
Have an agreement in place.
Okay, but to have a product to consider by that time, not just make, have a meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Is it deliverable, not just a meeting?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
And then, there was one other change that I had just sent to Michelle right before the meeting, and that was in that same paragraph, just to make it clear that although there was a comment that the village amended the agreement in 2020, that, that's not exactly what happened, so I suggested that the language read, it starts with Mr. Messner, and other members of the HD-LGBA requested the village release the funds. He asserted that an amendment was made, that had left the HD-LGBA in a tough financial situation. So, it's just making clear that was his position, not necessarily that that is the fact.
Okay, and then, consideration approval of executive session meeting minutes from the September 26, 2023 meeting, subject to non-substantive revisions, I don't think there were any, ratification release of the SSA funds to the HD-LGBA, and consideration approval of an application for the license to conduct a raffle, and waiving the license fee for Woodlawn Middle School, October 25, 2023, and March 13, 2024. Anyone wanna make a motion?
I do have a question or comment pursuant to item six, sort of pursuant to consideration of the rule of meeting minutes. The meeting minutes now reflect that I actually attended long enough in the public session to adjourn the meeting, so I'd like to, to attend these just prior to that vote.
Okay, well, you'll amend that, that he was part of the, okay, so, as amended, right, so.
He told it.
Moved by, moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Browski.
And that's with the changes to the.
As amended, yeah.
Trustee O'Reilly. Trustee Browski.
Aye.
Trustee Jamil.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Tinucci.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, we're gonna move to other business, and the first item on the agenda is the village planners report. Since Taylor, and I'm not gonna even pronounce his last name, W, is on vacation, because I messed it up the last time.
Wegren.
Wegren?
Wegren.
Wegren.
Wegren?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I would, I get that right from the spell.
Taylor is what I call him.
Thank you. Vic has been kind enough to recap the plan commission meeting, because that's really what his report's about.
Right, and the report simply gave a summary of the prior sessions regarding, that the report was focused chiefly on the Long Grove Fire Protection District's application for a special use permit. He did outline the history of that application as it went from the plan commission to the village board, and then back to the plan commission. At the last session of the plan commission, and as you all know, this is for a special use permit, allow the sighting of a fire station at the, the property with the common address of 5159 and 5161 Apptekisic, that's on the north side of Apptekisic, just east of 83. It was for a special use permit, as called for in the zoning code, to put a fire station there. The, the village received, the village plan commission received information from staff regarding various engineering issues relating to the need for wetland and stormwater detention clarifications, as well as coordination with Lake Dot, which has jurisdiction over Apptekisic Road. Also, in connection with that, just the overall stormwater and grading plan that would happen, and the need for ADA compliant parking on site, which wasn't clearly indicated in the, in the site plan. The, the need to confirm compliance with all the various OPE regulations was also pointed out in some of the zoning review of this. The property is generally shown in the comprehensive plan for uses consistent with our residential districts, and that includes fire protection and other governmental services as special uses. The plan commission did hear testimony and deliberated at, at some length, ultimately finding that the, that the proposal did not have any, any adverse impacts at this location that were different than what would be the impacts of a fire station at any other residential location. There were a number of conditions that the plan commission recommended. Those are incorporated into the draft ordinance, and they related to landscaping, wetland, and stormwater management, traffic, as well as the aesthetics of the building. And the plan commission did approve a recommendation to grant a special use permit by a four-to-one vote. The, the report was in the packet, if there's any questions, I can certainly try to supplement.
Any questions? Now, what I'd like to do next is open it up, the public comment again, relative to the fire station. I know that's, I think there's been five meetings so far on this, a lot of, a lot of comments so far, so, but if we could limit it, limit it to 15 minutes or so, if less, that's fine too, but.
Minutes a person, or 15 total?
15 total.
Okay.
You know, two, three minutes a person would be appreciated, so I'm sure there's comments, so I don't know who wants to begin. Yep?
Hi, I'm Steve Bernstein, I'm in Brattle with 5147, and I've been at several of these meetings that they're disciplining me. There have been over 50 different members of the community coming to speak to these meetings. Isn't that something that's blowing through, is it easy topic, something that people are passionate about, there's a reason for it? This site is in the midst of a residential community. We just spoke and said, from, I believe, Mr. Phil Tinney, that this site poses no other adverse effect versus other sites that were considered. That's exactly true, because all sites were not considered. There are many other sites that could be considered and simply rezoned to make it suitable for the fire station, and be more suitable than what is currently proposed. The one that I have submitted this morning for public record, was that received by all the members of the committee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Has everybody had a chance to peruse that? That parcel has been for sale for at least 10 years. It is a flat piece of land. It's at the corner of 53 and Route 83, at a stoplight, where the police, or the fire station could come and go as they please, change the lights as they please, they could turn left, right, straight, without any impact to any traffic in the area. This situation puts them in a location where they are not next to 100 other homeowners who are very opposed to this idea. I'm just astounded that nobody had come to the realization that changing the code of that little parcel would allow for a much better fit in our community, putting the fire station along a strip of land that is commercially zoned, basically, but reusing that little parcel so that they could build as needed. They could drop a 15-acre fire station in that area, and there's not a single person that's gonna say there's a problem with that. That land is bordered at the back by a tree line, there's only a few homes there, which would not be a direct earshot of fire station sirens if they needed to ever be able to get out. It would not be an issue on Apptekisic Road, where coming and going as the fire trucks need to turn right or left, would need to change the traffic pattern on a much busier road, which will be two lanes either way, and then coming up to 83's intersection, which would then have to stop. And even if the fire station can change all those lights in succession at that new proposed location, get those lights changed, to then finally move through that section of land, all the traffic behind is going to be impacted as well. There's gonna be a ridiculous amount of impact at this location. They have to move a pond, a wetland pond, they have to fill in part of it and reshape this pond, part of, or the lake, whatever that is called. I'm astounded at the amount of work that's gonna need to go into this property, the demolishment, the demolishing of a 4,500 square foot home, all the impact that it's gonna have to the environment, getting all the materials out of there. You've gotta cover the entire land, basically, with cement or asphalt in a building, you're gonna have the wetland impact. I, I just don't believe that due diligence was ever done to, to try to figure out a better solution. This location is literally two blocks from the current station. It would have zero impact to the drive time or the response time from where they come there. It actually might improve it, because they'll be on 83, and can, as they said, change the lights to make it easier to get to and from the locations on a faster road. I don't understand why this committee, the planning committee approved it, a million stipulations, which once they get through to that point, isn't really ever gonna get stopped if there's a problem, or is it just gonna get passed through the waste, you know, and hey, they know it'll give you a pass on this one because you didn't need X, Y, and Z. I don't believe that this thing is gonna go through smoothly as planned, I think it'll be a lot more expensive. You have to demolish hundreds of trees and create a huge space in the midst of a forested street, which is a nice residential type of a street, the backdrop to Briar Crest. I just don't understand the process and the thought process behind this. There are people that spoke to them at last meeting, say, let's move it along, let's move it along. The lady who said that's had a tour of the fire station that morning.
Who was she?
I, I don't understand this whole process and how this is, it has gotten to this point.
Thank you.
So, at any rate.
Thank you for your comments.
You can easily see the location, there are no drawbacks to that location, none at all. There's a lot to the current one that's being proposed.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it, Steve. Other public comment? You were first, yes?
My name is Mahalul Stopp. I live in 5152 Briar Crest Lane. I am also professor of finance at Devoe University. I think this investment is, will be a negative investment, MTV investment, it will be a waste of resources for the community. It will not improve the, like, overall valuing of people, rather, like, as the report said, only said that it's not, it will not have as much damage as other places. It's similar to saying that we will build a nuclear plant next to, next to your door, it won't have any negative impact in, in other places else. And I agree with the other speaker as well, there are other alternative places. I mean, the worst decision is a healthy decision without due diligence. I think this decision should be taken in account with due diligence and more careful consideration without making a grave mistake. This will, like, base millions of dollars and tons of money and lots of our time in the near future.
Thank you for your comments. Please.
Steve Hour over 5149 Briarway.
Can you say your name again, I'm sorry?
Sure, Steve Hour.
Oh, Steve, okay, thank you.
Just, I mean, just to focus in on the special use permit a little bit, a little more on point, I think that, you know, the concern that I have is sort of this transparency in government and the whole process. I mean, you know, not even like three weeks ago, everything was, you know, sort of a deficient proposal from the fire station in terms of, you know, how this is gonna be done, the impact, there's no renderings, there's no elevation, and then here we are, a couple weeks later, I don't think the proposal's been substantially changed, and, you know, we're sort of approving things with conditions and caveats. The concern I have is basically twofold. I mean, one, I think that, I'm not 100% sold that they're building a fire station, I mean, the significance of the amount of square footage, the amount of parking, yet no additional equipment, you know, are we building a village hall combined with a fire station, or is it really just a fire station? And so, you know, how does that affect the special use permit? I mean, if it was a small fire station like the one down the street, that might be a different conversation than a much bigger, larger building, et cetera. And the other thing that's a bit of an issue is just sort of the, the lack of benefits to the overall community. I mean, there was a presentation about an increase or a decrease, just the same response time, but that wasn't overlaid with the frequency of responses and where they respond to. So, in other words, like, you could say, hey, we're gonna be closer to X amount of people, but if 90% of your calls are to this group of people over here, how does that affect that 90% of people? And I think once you overlay that data to the response time, this location doesn't provide a positive benefit for the majority of users of the fire stations and the fire services.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments? Please.
My name's Eric, I'm running on that 5144 Briar Crest Lane, and I've been to all the meetings since I found out about this proposal. Spoken a few times, other times it's just kind of sad and a lot of other people, you know, I don't wanna recycle everything. You know, I echo all you guys concerning everybody who's spoken so far, and I just probably wanna give like a little different spin from my personal point of view. On the maps and proposals, it references 200 yards from the closest residence. That residence is mine. It's my backyard. This thing, my bedroom, my living, living area, and my backyard will have fire trucks literally coming out. We just lost like half of our tree line when they widened Apptekisic Road much further than they said they were going to. I went to that, I'm not eating, you know how this stuff goes, well, this'll happen, we'll take care of this, we'll do landscaping. They keep taking trees out, they're still taking trees out to, to put more utilities in, and, and the thing is, is like, well, we need to do it. My concern is, I'm gonna have fire trucks come into my backyard and my bedroom window. Backyard, the whole point of us moving along, is to have this nice countryside and quiet. My other concern, that's my own personal, above and beyond of what my subdivision needs to worry about. When we come out of the subdivision, we're gonna see yellow lights, we're gonna get congestion. They say they're not gonna use sirens, and I, and I do believe that they won't unless they have to, but that's gonna come up, we're gonna hear that. My next concern is, any of this stuff, there's gonna be an accident or congestion in front of us with the yellow lights, we're supposed to take care of that, but then the next thing will be, well, maybe we need a stoplight now. So, now all of a sudden, we have a stoplight outside our subdivision that's gonna further congest things, and what's, you know, open up, excuse me, on the Heinz Road, because we've already got a stoplight here now, we're getting congested, there's gonna be another outlet for a fire truck to move around, which will just allow other people to cut through, to get around 83, and we're gonna have this mess of, and it's just really a residential area. You know, we're going from 83 to Milwaukee Avenue, and it's, it's just gonna snowball. And, and I hope, as a board, that you guys truly are listening to what we're saying as residents. We're not here, we're not looking for flights, I appreciate the fire department, they do a great job, they deserve a new facility. I'm just saying, as a resident who lives right around it, we don't wanna hear. Understand it means to go somewhere, but maybe there's another residential location that doesn't have as great a concern as we do, or, or a commercial thing that we can rezone it differently. It's just, we're here because we have concerns, property values, quality of life, we don't want it in our backyard, and I hope, I hope you guys take that.
Thanks for your, thanks for your comment. Other comments? Please.
Can you move in? I live in Briar Crest, and I, I've not spoken before, because we've been well represented at previous meetings. We all want it in our backyard, we don't, we're concerned about the wetlands, concerned about traffic, concerned about noise pollution, and there have been several meetings. I think it's pretty clear that the residents that are adjacent to this proposed space for the fire department do not hold it whatsoever.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, please.
Please?
Somebody comes inside my house there for a moonlight. I'm so glad I have a chance to sit here, my mission not that good, and I just worry that if we have a fire that's stationed there, it will cause serious traffic problems, because 83 is already very busy now, so.
Thank you, thank you, I understand. Other comments? Well, I appreciate everyone sharing their public comment. If there are none, I'm gonna close the public comment, and then I'm going to turn this over to the board to deliberate, and it's basically discussion and consideration with ordinance approving a special use permit for 5159 and 5161 Apptekisic Road, the Long Grove Fire Department, Apptekisic Road Fire Station. So, where do we begin here? Who wants to, go ahead.
I have two questions, one that comes from conversation here. How many, how many calls a day, on average, do you have?
Five, five or six.
Really?
Do they all require the large trucks, or it's some sort of ambulance kind of situation?
All units of calls are responded with backup with the fire.
Thank you.
I sent your question this afternoon.
Yes, I actually did send out a response, but I'll share it with the full board. The question was, in the draft ordinance, there's a reference to utilities and the ability to get a recapture for oversizing. Oversizing is something that is really an engineering calculation, the, the pipe and the pressure will deliver a certain amount of water at a certain rate, and there's a, I'm sorry?
Based on what? I thought it was based on, on population or usage?
Well, the, the ability of the water to be pushed through is a, a matter of physics, and I'll defeat, I'll defer to Jeff as far as that goes, but in terms of.
Can you recite?
Well, I mean, you know, a pipe of eight inches will be different than a pipe of 12 inches in terms of how much water comes through. The, the oversizing notion is what is needed to serve this property versus what would be the capacity of whatever is installed, and that's an engineering calculation that is routinely done, not just here, but really throughout Illinois, that's, that's an authorized type of approval.
It's based on something?
Yes, it's, it's based on.
What is the something, and, and who decides what's a something, yes?
Okay, the something is rate of, of water flow, which is a matter of the, the size of the pipe versus demand of flow by the, in this case, the fire protection district. And that difference is the oversizing for which recapture could be available.
In, I'm sorry, can I restate?
Excuse me, has my, has my, so, in theory, one could provide water to Briar Crest based upon a certain size line being put in? being put in?
In theory, yes. I don't know what our pumping capability is at the plant, and I don't know whether, I see Jeff is online, so he may have some better guesstimate as to what that would be, but...
Okay, I'm more interested in process. Who decides what could be added and when? So that I knew that it wasn't, that it was a good thing for the people that are close by.
In terms of the water, that's something that, in terms of what's going to be constructed, if something's going to be constructed, it's going to be an engineering issue as well as one that comes before the village manager to make sure that it's going to be sufficient. Now, in terms of the oversizing, that's something that the village board, as the ultimate regulator of the water system, can determine whether or not it's going to be size X or size Y.
So that will come back here?
We can certainly make that express in the ordinance.
I would like it to.
Okay.
I don't want to lose the track of it.
Did you have something to add, or did Jeff, is there a question? We want Jeff to...
I was trying to restate what I heard in English, but I think they got there, and I got there.
You got there, okay, yeah, okay. I mean, there is benefit of the water being extended across the street to the fire station that could be used by Briarcrest. Also, if we are able to connect to Lake Michigan water, then Lake Michigan water would reveal that to all the residents of Briarcrest and the fire station, and the water flow would be significantly greater.
And all that is unknown.
All that's unknown right now, right. Anything could happen, right.
But it's like, if you're going to go under the road, we'd want to have a reasonable discussion before going onto that road.
Well, that's the whole point.
Yep.
Yep, I appreciate that.
Okay, so other thoughts, comments, questions? We heard some, lots of things over the last few meetings. Anything you want to discuss?
I will mention, if you had not seen, there was a further redraft of the ordinance that included one additional phrase that came out this afternoon. It was just to clarify that as part of the overall process, which is otherwise required under our code anyway, but rather than leave it to guesswork, we put it in the ordinance that the architectural board does, or the Fire Protection District does have to get the review and approval of the architectural board for the ultimate elevations of the building.
That was in Section 3A specifying...
That was in Section 3B, I believe.
Oh, I thought it was...
3B.
Okay.
It was in the parenthetical, and it says, including but not limited to, I've added architectural review, board review as well as...
You know, along those lines, Vic, I want to ask you a question, and about, there's basically the landscaping that's required, it's pretty specific, and I think it is 5.7.9 of our code, is that right?
Right, we have in our code very detailed requirements as to the type of screening and buffering that's required for any use. And while there are varieties of ways to satisfy it, all of it is based on achieving a minimal amount of opacity that will screen the use. And, you know, it's a function of type of materials and depth of the buffer yard, but we have been employing those requirements, I want to say, since at least the early 2000s. So when you look around the village, if you appreciate the type of screening in the village, it's because we've had these regulations in place for all of that time to ensure that the character of the village as a well landscaped and well screened community remains in effect.
Well, I have a question. Section 3B, if the district failed to get the architectural and watershed methods permits, do they have any alternate locations where this property is going to go?
I don't know what their alternatives are. They, you know, again, the Fire Protection District approached this eyes wide open, and they knew that we have requirements, they know that they have to comply with the requirements. And while they have provided application materials that meet the minimum requirements of our code for that, they're, from the plant commission's perspective, we're still in need for more particularization of their plans. And that's why they had those conditions on their recommendation, and that's what we've tried to incorporate fully into the ordinance.
A question to the residents as well. Gentlemen over there pointed out that, you know, have been less expensive for other sites than this one. Question is, if you guys approached the Fire Protection District, raised the concerns at the initial stage when they chose the property, and you saw what was their response? Because I understand that they have their own district that review the locations and other sites. Speaking for myself, I didn't know that there was even a place selected until I heard about the planning permission. We didn't see nobody was supposed to buy a property. Nobody got me out of saying, this is what's potentially happening, we just got through a couple of each of them, and just first about it. And as for the alternate site that you referred to, the one that I came up with, with that farm land at 83 and 53, which is sitting, well, a farmer's cornfield right now, but pretty flat, that already has Lake Michigan water. Their fire engines running straight along the road all the way up there. There wouldn't be no need for drawing water across or anything. I'm really, I'm just confused as to why other sites were never chosen or looked at differently. It seems like the only sites that were chosen were in residential neighborhoods to look at. And I know that that's the ordinance, but that's not taken out of the box, one bit, and it's simply not the best location that I came up with. There's others that I came up with that aren't near residences either, but in the yellow box area that the fire department had chosen or had selected for them based on their data, that's clearly within the boundaries, it's right next to where the current station is. Wouldn't require a lot of work to make it happen. They could build their own pond, they could build their own forest, 15 acres, and it would be a lot cheaper to move there.
Yeah, just to build on that too, I mean, I feel like in the previous meetings, it's been asked and answered, you know, what were the alternative sites? And nobody seems to get to know that, and it hasn't been provided. And I kind of go back to this transparency thing, it's like, well, you know, you're telling us this is the best location to put it, but then you're not giving us any of your alternatives or any reasoning or how you got to that conclusion. And frankly, some of the data that's been presented is a little questionable.
I understand the apprehension of the residents. The village board, what, you know, the planning commission now approved, while this fire station, if it is in another area, the same concerns what you guys expressed, can be again brought to the notice. So, this is going to be a repeating cycle. So as long as everything is in order for the special to accommodate, the village board should take a decision, probably they are going to take it, but they ask, because the residents are raising the concern. Simple generic question to all of you is, if this is relocated somewhere else, do the same concerns of the other residents also come to bed?
I don't think we know...
Because obviously, you know, nobody wants...
Right, right.
Is there any other locations that are commercial?
It doesn't have as big of an impact on the residents from a immediate proximity to our entrance, we have one entrance and exit to Briarway. Briarcrest has more, but then you have residents that are looking at the back. I understand, nothing's perfect, but you don't know what the other locations are, and maybe, you know, the pits that they've been giving you, your value control is going to increase, which is not going to happen, but maybe someone else at another location will value that proximity versus, we are coming opposing it because we're not doing it for fun, we truly believe that it's going to impact our values, our resale value and just our, or even quality of life. Maybe another location is affecting that, maybe they don't have a view of it, maybe it isn't driving out into someone's backyard, or if you're in your backyard in Briarcrest, you're looking at the back of this, this 20,000 square foot thing coming from a plane. You know, I don't, I don't get it, and that's, well, and my thought, and you asked about, is there other folks, are there other folks that would be equally impacted?
We've brought up about 50 different members of the community in our areas, and there are more that haven't been able to make it, that do oppose this. Not somebody that's off on Route 53 somewhere far away who's wondering why this isn't being done. We're not talking about folks that aren't impacted, we're talking about people who are impacted. And you asked if others would be equally impacted if this were relocated. The location I'm referring to is a 15 acre, double the size of what they're currently looking at, 15 acres. It is not near anybody's residence other than a church, and there's two other backyards that back up to that property, tree line. And the fire engines would not be coming out with sirens into their front yard or backyard, in Eric's case.
I can answer that, I can respond to you, because I heard you ask this with the PDC.
Okay, thank you.
That land is known as the South 15, because it's 15 acres, it's privately owned and it's commercially zoned. Commercial has a higher sale value than residential. I don't, in order to get a special use permit, zoning has to be R2. That's commercial. It's off, it's irrelevant, it's off the board. You can't, we're not, we're not in anarchy, we can't just go around changing zoning when we feel like.
There, well, yeah.
The owner, the owner has to ask for it.
Well, the other, the other aspect of that parcel is the fact that there is been, has been interest, and there continues to be interest in commercial development, in commercial development that can generate sales tax for the village, and so that, and it's in our comprehensive plan set up for that, and so that, you know, that's one, it would be a tough sell to put it in that spot only because of the fact that that, the plan is, and there is, there's been, continues to be interest of a developer coming in there and doing something, and there's some activity right now as we speak, so...
I would add to that. Number one, that is, that is the top priority to develop in a TIS district, just improving that land overall could be as much as, you know, the Harbor Chase, improving that could be well over half a million dollars a year once that becomes fully improved, then the sales tax on top of that, and that's why it's in the comprehensive plan. The other one, I think, is, Rita's point is, as a realtor, is apt, it's more expensive land, and the other is, that curve is already dangerous.
Very dangerous.
That curve where 853 meets 83, but, yeah.
It's irrelevant.
Yes, I understand.
The land doesn't have... So, that's, that's the issue.
The owner...
I thought it could be, we talked about it, the planning commission, it could be rezoned.
An owner must ask for that.
Yeah, we can't, we can't, what if we came to you and said, you know, well, we want to change you to commercial, how would that be?
Well, if you want, I don't want a fire station to come in and do that.
But let me, let me go on, let me go on. Please, let me finish. Are you finished?
You're finished?
See, I understand the state that there is concern about property values, and you can take this to what it's worth. I have spoken with appraisers, I've been in the real estate business.
I'm a real estate broker too.
Okay, so I've been in for a long time. I cannot prove to you that your property values are going to go down because I can't show you anywhere where that's the case. And if I can't show you where they have gone down, I can't tell you they're going to go up. I, there are no studies that, that I have been able to find, and I've talked to three appraisers this week, and they say, why would that be a concern? Okay, so, my experience, sign in if you wish, bodies in real estate as well, and appraisers, I can't prove to you that your values are going to go up or down. I can tell you what they are. But I have never, in the decades that I have been in this, never had a client say, I don't want to live there, it's too close to a fire station.
Yeah, but, oh, that's entirely true. I actually cited a couple, few studies that were done on noise pollution and the effect of property values, is one of the first things I sent to the board, started on that. And in those studies, it actually shows a natural value decrease in properties that are located next to, you know, a highway, a factory, an airport, things like that. And when you're talking about a fire station in Apptecistic, I mean, this isn't down the street where there's no traffic, this is four lane Apptecistic, four lane 83, I don't care where we are, those sirens are going to be glaring when they come out there going, you know, to all these calls. And that's noise, and that's going to affect the property values, in just fact.
Okay, well, just one second. It's my understanding that, and I don't live far from the current station, you don't turn the sirens on until you're how far away?
Turn them on until we need them. And you're going to need them on a four lane road.
But can I have a follow-up question? Do you guys have any competitive property values being down near the fire station elsewhere in the city, like Mandaline or, you know, somewhere else, Harton Woods or whatever fire station? Do you have any actual data to prove that the property value goes up? Because what I'm hearing is apprehension that when it comes, the property value goes down. So every neighborhood will have the same issue. I'm not a real estate, but...
Part of the challenge is that it's an existing fireplace, and it's, it's all been just, you know, a developer comes in and says, we're going to build our own fire station, they're probably going to have to discount a little bit because it's there. The first fire coming in says, great, you know, it might cost me 50 grand or more to go a couple blocks away, but I'll take that house for the discount. Also, a discount on the layout. It's different when you're already living there, and this thing gets slapped across your subdivision with, it's called an external oscillation. It's the external factor that you can't control that negatively impacts you. You know, you can have bad landscaping, you can have, you can do some crazy, that stuff, but you can't control if a government entity is coming in and putting something up that... We're here because we have concerns, we're not making, there's, perception's reality. I mean, if there is no one away, people pull in, pull out, and they see a big fire station, there's going to be a concern.
I have a question for our engineer.
Hey, Jeff, there's a question for you. Can you go on video or something?
Yep.
So my question, in Section 3, Section H, under traffic, the way this is worded, it seems fairly nebulous, and I'm trying to understand, is this common with, maybe it's from you, Vic, and in practical terms, what is this telling us?
Well, the traffic, I'll start it off, Jeff, and you are welcome to then supplement, but the traffic in this instance is not within the village's jurisdiction.
Right.
The impacted roadway, Apptecistic is a county road in terms of access, in terms of their determination whether it's going to impact the level of service, and we can literally talk to a boo in the face, and that won't have any material impact on how the county's going to analyze it. Likewise, to the extent that one wants to look at the next major intersection, that's under IDOT's jurisdiction. So, in both of those instances, we are not the traffic authority. What we have tried to do is to try to make sure that there's not going to be any nod, wink, or blink from either of those jurisdictions in connection with the approvals that the Fire Protection District is going to need. And that's why we say that it will conform to the applicable access and management, traffic management requirements and standards of those roadway jurisdictions. So they get to set the rules, but what we are saying in this ordinance is that we need to make sure and have confidence that they are complying with those rules.
Okay, so this is basically saying, we're going to force the heads together and say, you must talk to them, and...
And they would, they would need to anyway, but...
I understand.
But what the concern that we tried to address in the draft is that the rules that are in place, the standards that exist, are going to be complied with even if we are not the enforcing authority.
Okay, sort of belt and suspenders, but okay, thank you.
Jeff, I don't know if you had anything to add to that.
What are those typically?
Well, that's, I'll leave it to Jeff.
No, Vic, to your point, the fire department did have a pre-application meeting with Lake DIT back in late August, just to, you know, like you said, bring the, bring the minds together, so everybody's talking on this. Like I said, it was a pre-application meeting, they just kind of went over what was going to be required, you know, from a site plan, from a submitted standpoint, didn't really get into too many details at that meeting, but that's part of the county process, and kind of kicked off the county's formal knowledge of the project and, you know, those two agencies working together.
Thank you.
Yep.
I, I got some questions. If I may.
I'll go ahead and ask the fire department people, like the village people.
When I, I would please ask for response times, and I compare the existing station response times with the new station's response times. The, the longest response times are in the purple and the lilac.
Correct.
This new map has a lot more purples and liles than, than not. And we're, we're here to speak for the residents of the village that's to be looked over. It concerns me that there's a lot of purples. And I'm, I'm wondering if, what could be done to reduce these response times? For example, instead of building one new station, was it ever considered to build a second station closer or, or better for all of these residents that are in the purple? You know, the, the green are, the, the green ones are the shortest response times. And the green got greener when the station moved, but the lilac got darker and the dark got bigger.
There's more area in the lilac in, in the newer location, two percent more, not an appreciable difference, but it's an, it's an increase. And that's our benchmark is the lilac area. We can't achieve anything better than that with a one-station fire district. And we can't afford to staff a second station. So that's not in the foreseeable future for the fire district.
But these, okay, so I went to the NFPA standard for the organization and deployment of fire suppression operations, emergency medical operations, and special operations for the public by career fire department. And they talk about response times. Was this response time measured by the NFPA standards? Or are these response times from the time the truck pulls out till the first engine gets there?
Travel time.
Which, which.
Just travel time?
Which standard, one standard, okay, so the, the NFPA standard time, the, when the alarm call comes in and the alarm process, the alarm call comes in and that takes sixteen seconds ninety-five percent of the time, forty seconds ninety percent of the time. Alarm processing time, a hundred and six seconds to ninety-nine. Turnout, eighty seconds. First due engine, two hundred and forty seconds, which is four minutes, and, and so on. So I'm wondering if these response times match the standards put forth by the National Fire Protection Association? Or are these real time?
Real time. Can't match NFPA's.
When is real time, okay, please tell me why. Why can't, we don't match the standard?
Because we can't with a one station for the amount of territory that we cover.
So from the, so these, these response times are start when? The ones that are on this chart, they, what's, what's the first, third?
The chart, the G I, the G I S mapping is done by travel time. So that would be from that location to the end of the car.
So theoretically, practically speaking, time the call comes in and, and all of these, all of these motions, human motions, the turnout, the, the first due engine, the alarm processing, that's another three or four minutes according to this standard. So these response times would be off by three or four minutes, which is kind of scary.
Wouldn't that be the same in either case?
But it, the purple is six and a half to.
I, I'm just saying.
Four minutes to get to you.
Time to get a call to people in truck wheels moving wouldn't matter which building you're in, would it? Or might it?
But, but, but your, your answer is, is travel time. Like if I.
Map indicates travel time, yes.
Yeah, so, but it doesn't, these minutes, I just want to be sure I understand this properly. Travel time minutes are less than the minutes involved between the time that the call comes in and the truck gets through, whatever the.
Response time is a total component, yes. Travel time is one component of response time.
Right. So, so in real life, if I add these minutes on to the travel time, there, there's like three or four minutes that get attached to the time on there.
Our average response time last year was five minutes forty-nine seconds for all incidents in the district.
Yes, yes. And, and I, I understand a lot of the calls that are for the nursing home. You know, I, I live near one and every time somebody falls, the truck goes down. You know, I, I understand that.
Trusty, Connor, can I ask a follow-up question though? So my question would be, on the periphery, when does another fire department get engaged to help you?
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid, how does that work?
So, we have automatic aid. So mutually is different. Mutually means we have to call and ask someone for help. We are in a dynamic dispatch system which picks and hosts available resource and sends that. So our, our dispatch center is controlled by GPS units on our vehicles and our neighbors' vehicles, and it identifies the closest unit in its dispatch system, which is why we end up in Buffalo Grove a lot of times and why they end up in, in our district. Lake Zurich as well, anybody that's in the surrounding area. There's actually been times when a, a wheeling engine happened to be coming back from a call and they're closer to a call in our district than we are. Both sense now.
So, to piggyback on that, so some of these folks in the dark purple and up here, you know, north, the north end, which has countryside.
Countryside, right.
They've been up there, but this is in, this, this, these parameters, it seems to me that Deer Park is much closer, the firehouse on Quentin, to come right up Long Grove.
We often use them, yes. That, Lake Zurich is, is an automatic aid resource for us.
Okay. All right. So these outlying areas and these little guys down to bottom, Cook County, for lack of better phrase, you know. You know, my bias is Long Grove resident, safety. So why are, why, why are we in Lincolnshire and Buffalo Grove when Buffalo Grove has a station right on Deerfield Parkway? I don't, I don't understand how, it looks like this thing is gerrymongering.
You don't understand how the district got drawn?
The public is a Democrat.
Oh, you're talking about the district itself, yeah.
Yes, you know.
In nineteen thirty-nine, when the district was created, it, it contained a major portion of Gilas Township, Vernon Township, and Palatine Township. We used to go all the way south into what's the village of Palatine now. Check how big the district was. As villages that have fire departments annexed into the district, then it takes that away from the fire district and, and makes it the responsibility of the village fire department to protect. Lincolnshire doesn't have a village fire department, that's why we protect parts of, of Lincolnshire. Deer Park doesn't have a village fire department, that's why we protect parts of Deer Park. All, all five of our villages.
So, so is, is the net, net of, of those questions that maybe Long Grove should consider our own fire department for all these people in these dark purple areas? I mean, to me, this is really scary. If my house is burning or my, you know, a child isn't breathing, eight, eight, four minutes. Somebody else is calling. Maybe.
Well, you know, so, so just let me turn this around and I'm going to get yelled at by the residents in the room. Where that fire station is, if I'm in Briar Crest, if I'm having a heart attack, I'm happy it's right there.
Correct, correct.
Right? So to your point, you know what I mean?
Understood, absolutely. Understood, understood.
Super quick point, but I asked this at the other meeting, the planning committee, but, so in moving this thing to Aptikisik, you know, four lane road, it's like a straight shot to Buffalo Grove, and they're building so many houses and, you know, high density median density over there. I mean, does that then draw our services in the Buffalo Grove and increase both the number of calls, so this four o'clock call today becomes ten to fifteen? And also does that deplete resources that are available for Long Grove to answer those calls because of.
Can we ask the chief to answer that?
That's a concern.
Can we ask you to answer that?
And, and there is no real, any answer for that.
Okay.
I mean, we're dependent on what resources are available and what resources are needed. So if, if we are needed in another jurisdiction because we're the closest available, then that's where we go. And automatically the system backfills. So someone else now covers our jurisdiction.
Would you ever speak of Buffalo Grove going into their station?
Yes, my, my.
Because they're out to taking care of someone else and, and their backup coming.
It all takes time. That's my point.
Well, sure it does. It sure does, but it's just like, wouldn't it be nice to have a cop on every street?
That's not my, that's not what we're discussing.
Okay, then have a fire truck on every street. That would be nice. Then nobody would ever, ever have problems. The reality is.
My concern is there are people who are now farther away.
Well, it, it, it's been shifted, right? So it's.
Yeah.
It's an equal proportion now some, some others are further away and now some are closer. And you can't, you can't move and not have the exact encoverage area. So if by moving, we've actually increased our coverage area.
Yeah, which is a bad thing for people in Buffalo, if you increase your coverage.
And, and in all reality, most of that, a, a good portion of that purple area is, is not inhabited. I mean, a lot of that is forest preserve.
Well, I checked that. I checked that, but there's still a fair number of residents, country club estates.
There, there are, but.
You know, and. A second station would never, never on the.
I just said it's not in the foreseeable future. It is probably in the long range plan where we actually have, have that in the next phase of our planning phase, which would be in the next twenty years, but it's not foreseeable future. So it's not going to be in the, in the next ten years. I'm sorry, I thought you said that this firehouse was going to be good for the next fifty years. That was a question. Absolutely, if we have to supplement it with something on the park. So I didn't say the next twenty years will be another firehouse. No, I said that's, that's planning phase is twenty years. Okay, so is this firehouse good for fifty years or? Yes, it is. Absolutely. So why the additional twenty-year? This will have to all depend on call, call load and whether our automatic aid resources are actually covering that area.
It would depend on whether the golf course on the river becomes a density and dense in development.
All right, let's not go there.
Could I, could I ask, to do some of the conversation here, I, I sense a concern that we would not be enforcing each and every requirement. So could you describe for the residents, what happens if they don't meet a requirement?
Well, if you look at the draft ordinance, it's making very clear that all of the things that are identified have to be satisfied before any permits get issued. So no permit can be issued. It's simply as straightforward as that.
Okay, so if they don't do the.
If they can't demonstrate wetland compliance, they can't get a permit. If they don't comply with the watershed development ordinance, they can't get a building permit.
If they don't do proper landscaping.
They, they, until they get an approved landscaping plan, they don't get a permit. That's how we have structured this so that the, the cart does not go before the horse.
Which is similar to a housing development.
This is what we do in pretty much all of our.
Yeah, my very first meeting.
But we have had situations where people have not.
Yes, and, and, I mean, we, we have some that have lost their approval over time because they weren't able to satisfy all of those requirements in a timely fashion. So.
Okay. I hope that gives some comfort to, to the residents that what you see is what you're going to get.
Hey, Chris, you're making faces.
Yeah, I am, first of all, I'd like to thank Village Attorney Philippi for informing me that we could push twelve inches of water through a twelve-inch pipe better than we could push through a three-inch pipe. My sixth wonder of life is just really enlightening tonight, so thank you for that. I don't like the loose ends. Loose ends in these agreements end up coming back to bite us. You know, it wasn't an agreement, but United or Vision Church up in, up by.
Rockford.
Rockford. You always want to build a church, yeah, sure, let's build a church. And then the plan comes in and it's not just a church. The Smokehouse was not supposed to be, it's essentially a three-story restaurant banquet building. It was supposed to be a replacement for, for the bucolic, bucolic country Smokehouse, but yet went through the process and lo and behold, they're putting in twelve-inch high beams in a second-story structure that nobody on the planning commission at that time envisioned, but it went through the process and somehow got approved. So what I really don't like of a loose end, I really don't. I, I drive that neighborhood, I do eighty-three every day, morning and rush, and evening commute. I have no way to guess how you can get a fire truck through there. I just, you can turn the sirens on, you could flip them, but those cars are not going to manage to even vanish or stop from, you know, from, from Sunset Ood, you know, all the way up to beyond twenty-two and even all the way up to Gilmer, it's a parking lot. Those cars are just not vanished. So when you say, well, we'll get the traffic study done and things will be good, practically, no freaking way. There's no way. You can flip on all the sirens you want. There's no place for those trucks to go north on eighty-three in the evening. And there's no way for them to go south in the morning. I just don't understand it. So I don't like the loose end side of it. I think we've got residents here who have some serious concerns that are not being addressed. Yes, you can put landscaping in, but is that going to do it? I don't know. Why don't we get those details worked out? Why don't we see the traffic study? Why don't we just get the flat ceiling that says, okay, when you flip the lights on and the truck's got to go north on eighty-three and it's five o'clock in the afternoon on a Friday with a Stevenson football game going on, how are you going to do it? I just don't see it. The current location has multiple routes to get the vehicles in and out. You put it on Aptikisik and you're going north, you've got nowhere to get there. You just don't. I just don't see how it's practical. So I'd really like to work the details out. If you're asking me to approve this ordinance as drafted tonight, it's too premature.
I guess I'm going to be unpopular. I, I am comfortable with the loose end stuff. I think that going up on eighty-three, if the fire truck has to get north on eighty-three, it's got to get there from either location. I completely understand the traffic of which you speak. I have been in that. I, I do, you know, and I, I think that that is, I, I'm not a fire chief, so there's, there's part of me not trying to second guess that. I think this is hard. I hear all of this. I also, you know, you know, I can, I'll be the nasty person. I said this in, when we were talking about a solar field, if you don't own the property next to you, you don't get to necessarily say, I want that view forever. Now, it is our job to not put toxic waste and things like that. So we're trying to do that, but, pardon?
I'm sorry.
I, I, I think it's a challenge. I know, you know, from a finance hat, that bond issue got passed, they have twelve months to spend some money. Okay? They must spend some money. That's how it works in this state. Otherwise that's, you know, so that's, that's an important consideration. I think that the opportunity to put that on Aptikisik, I, I like our, I like the things that we have in Long Grove, but I do think that more and more, we're going to have more people who demand more services of our community, the fire department, the village, the police department. And those services, I don't want those in the middle of forest preserve. They should be on, in my opinion, they should be on those busy roads, concentrating there so that then it's not, you know, right out in the middle of the core, you know, that right smack in the middle of Briar Crest. It's on the periphery, it's on the edge. It's, it's how I feel. I will absolutely keep my eye on lots of this. If I'm asking the things about the traffic, I am comforted by the caveats in the ordinance before us to make sure that all of these things are addressed that have been. You know, property values are not something in the ordinance necessarily, but I think, I, I, I am comfortable with the caveats that have been stated and that the planning commission. I am comfortable with the caveats that have been stated and that the planning commission put in, you know, in a passing vote.
Thank you. Trustee, so...
I apologize. I believe I'm in a situation where I was moved by my thoughts, so I apologize that you go.
I'm sorry.
Okay, but thank you.
I hope it resolves.
Thank you.
All right, so where does that leave us? I hope everything's okay. That's not good.
No, that's...
Well, to rebut that, if I may, I don't think it's incumbent on this board to make sure that the fire department spends their money within allocated time. That's not our responsibility.
I can see that. I agree.
And to me, to me, we're a village of 8,000 people and 8,000 residents. We haven't seen any specific, I hadn't seen it, maybe I missed it, any specific data that says we absolutely need a firehouse moved to this location because, and yet we're going to encumber the residents who live around that neighborhood. So I still think that traffic issue is really, really important. On the opposite side, my brother lives across the street from the firehouse in Burbank. They put it in front of his house. It comes and goes with way more than five or six calls a day. They're very happy, but it's a quiet residential street without the traffic of 83. So I still just really, really have no idea how that structure is going to move around that area. I just don't.
Did you watch any of the video from the meeting last week?
No.
So they talked about that this was, the current station was built as for volunteer and all of that. Like, right now, male, female, there's like, there's curtains. It was not structured to have people sleeping overnight. And so if you and I are there, our separation is like 1939, it happened one night where they put the seats in between.
But it's okay because the school kids can share the same bathroom now, right? So we...
I would say, I had the same concern, and I wrestled with it all these months, and then it occurred to me that they do it now.
Right.
Make it up 83.
But they could also go up the other way.
Agreed.
Right? And then come back down around and get in the traffic flow. But if you're coming out that apticusic intersection, where are you going to go?
We're not a grid town like Buffalo Grove, Palatine, or other things. We don't have a lot of cut-through options, except for Checker Road.
Okay, so let me, so a lot of debate here. So does anyone want to make a motion tonight to move this along? What do you want to do?
I pretend that we just lost the trustee's vote.
I think in terms of the number, there's a need for a concurrence of four. If there's a concern after the outcome of the vote, there can always be a motion to reconsider. And if not, then the petition will proceed based on whatever the vote is. I would note, apropos trustee O'Reilly's prior comments about making sure that the village board ultimately made the approval on the utilities, I would suggest in Section 3F as a frame, the fourth line currently reads, upon the determination of the village manager. I would simply make that on the determination of the village board.
Yes.
I agree with that. Thank you for mentioning that, Bobby.
I would make a motion to approve the special...
Use permit.
Ordinance granting a special use permit.
Yep.
Here, if you want to have fun with it.
Yeah.
I've lost my agenda now.
Move the special use permit ordinance with the change in Section 3F.
Here it is.
There were no other changes?
The change that you made...
Oh, and the change from earlier.
Change to clarify the architecture commission.
So that would be 3D and F.
All right, that was moved by trustee O'Reilly?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer. That's a roll call.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Aye.
Trustee Varyskey?
Nope.
Trustee Jamil?
Aye.
Trustee O'Pattner?
No. I'm not convinced that Lynn Purple, that there is a more adverse in this location than it looks in another.
The village president... Well, the village president has the ability to vote.
Yeah, so I'm trying to think of what I want to do here. Yeah, no, I'm, so part of me, so I'm like, both ways on this one, because I walked that property on Sunday, and I saw that house that was there, and there were, the house that's where the fire station's going to go?
Oh.
The deck is falling off of it. And there were people with a garbage can with a fire, and then their landscaping trucks were there, and then there's the mulch, you know, farm over there on the other side, and I'm like going, wow, this, this whole area here, I mean, maybe it looks nice when the trucks aren't there and the fire pits not going and the mulch pits aren't there in the winter, but I was looking at that going, huh, is, with the fire station in that spot with appropriate landscaping, the appropriate architecture, would that actually be worse than what's there now? And I was really trying to, I was trying to imagine that. I was literally going, you know, what would I do? And then I'm thinking, if I'm a resident and I have a issue, my house is burning, I have a health problem, wow, I could, I could, you know, the department, fire department could be there right away to protect me. I was also thinking about the fact that if we're able to move water across the street, all the residents of Briarcrest would potentially have access to it. And we know there's a problem because of the, whatever the chemical is, uranium, that's in the water, they're going to have to do something to the private well. So now, is there a way to get water there? So I wonder, you know, what's worse or better, right? Obviously, I live next to the countryside fire station. Now, granted, it's not, it's several miles down the road, but there's nothing in between, and so all the sound carries. So for the most part, it's really quiet. Every now and then, you'll hear a siren go off. But even when they come into our neighborhood at night, I got out and walked and chased the fire truck. Where are they going, right? They don't even put the sirens on our neighborhood. So I guess what I'm saying is, I hear what the residents are saying, that they're worried about their life-changing. And in fact, if a fire, the other issue that I've heard is if a fire station goes there, it will block, if you will, future residential development, right? Because there won't be the ability, no one's going to want to put, you know, residential development there. Fire station picks the middle of the property, right? So then I was thinking, then I was looking at the fact that on Hilltop, you know, you could give access to, Briarcrest gave access to single-family homes that could go in there where the mulch farm is right there, right? And if the landscaping was done around the fire station properly, that, you could very well see development there. And that doesn't even mean on the other side by Valley Bunyan, that there wouldn't be a chance for residential development. So I guess what I'm saying is that I've come to the conclusion that, you know, I think that I can support and say, yes, I know that you're not going to be happy with me on this, but I think in the end, I think it might be the right thing for the department, provided, and for the village, provided that all these conditions are met. There's still a lot of things that got to be met. I was looking at the landscaping that's required. It's pretty specific. It's pretty significant. So it's not going to be, it's just not going to be where, you know, it's all going to be barren. They're going to have to put stuff back, and they're going to have to buffer from the street, et cetera, except for where the trucks come out, right? So I guess what I'm saying is, I'm going to be an aye. Sorry.
Bill, I think all of you who are voting yes are reluctant.
Yeah.
We are reluctant.
It's not a, it's not a...
I have fought many, many battles for issues like this. I've won some, I've lost some, but there's an emotional thing about putting something into a neighborhood that is gut-wrenching. No matter what it is, it's gut-wrenching. It saddens me to say yes. But it kind of like happens to be. And it's like, I built my house. I was so quiet, it was, all I could hear were birds. And then Route 53 was planned for my next street. And then the train tracks that had four or five engines come through a day, or up to 30 a day now. Times change.
Well, I just, I mean, you know where I live. It's your time, I'm going to hear it.
Yeah.
I am going to hear it.
Sure.
I hear, I mean, I get a lot of 83, and I'm expecting apticusic too now, but I get a lot of 83 noise.
Well, maybe we could open...
Well, that's an interesting question, too. So can Arlington Heights, I forget now exactly where it is with Sunset there, can Arlington Heights be opened up for the fire department only to get through if need be, is another way to get by? Don't know.
Let's say it was broken.
That's another resident's concern.
That would be somebody, yeah, another resident, well, Yan lives there, too. Do you live right there on that part there, or no?
We live right near there.
Right, yeah.
It's one of the things that keeps our neighborhood quieter.
Yeah.
So now you're going to open it up, they're going to have to widen, it's not widening up, and we're going to have a...
No, no, we wouldn't open it up for general traffic. In other words, it would be a release to let the trucks go through only in an emergency. So some kind of a gate. But anyways, I don't mean to make this worse. Different topic. Well, till the gate, so all right, so the motion carried, passed, so thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the Village Engineers Report presented by Jeff Perry.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So the Engineers Report is in the board packet. I'll go through and highlight just a few things for you this week. I will start with, there's a active construction going on, both in Towners and in Creekside. Number one on the report is the Osage Road Drainage Project. Construction started yesterday with some prep work, and today they started laying pipe in there. As discussed over the last few meetings, we're looking at getting the pipe installed within a week, weather depending, a little rain in the forecast on Thursday, so we'll see how that affects things.
Just a comment, I got a call from a resident, the contractor parked their truck in front of the driveway and they couldn't get in last night, so, and I didn't pick it up. I didn't pick it up and...
Why would anybody do that?
Yeah, so...
The fire department. Just enough.
So literally, so John Sapata, right, so he'll, pretty sure, he gives me this, sends me this text message, and of course, I go to bed at like 11:15 last night, and it's like, right around that time, and I missed it. First thing in the morning, they got the, they got his driveway cleared up, but when I got up, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, you bet. So, yeah, though, that was an interesting one, and of all the years I've been doing this, I've never seen them park a piece of construction equipment on a private residential driveway overnight. So that was, interesting is one word for it. Just the other thing on the Osage Road project, the driveway culvert replacements are the responsibility of the homeowners, so we're still in discussions with them just to make sure that that work is coordinated, and also the owners are going to be financially responsible for that, so the village is made, made or kept whole, as you might want to look at it. So we're getting that done. Number three, the Robert Parker Coffin Bridge, Carmichael Construction was out there to make the repairs to that. Number four is the 2023 Road Maintenance Program. That's where I mentioned that the contractor has started doing the asphalt removal in Creekside. They're going to finish that tomorrow and looking to pave that either later this week or early next week, weather depending.
Holy cow, Jeff, you did the whole friggin' street today. I can't believe how fast they moved.
Peter Baker is a very large contractor, and I've always said, when they put their mind to something, they can do it.
Hey, Jeff.
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a nice orange sign on 83 saying that Robert Parker Coffin will be closed for two weeks. Is it possible to request another sign actually on Robert Parker Coffin for the people who drive there?
Absolutely.
It's at that terrible curve, you know, it's orange, but it's at that terrible curve where when people are going, they're trying to go and make the light.
Which side are you talking about?
It's on the, it's by the South 15. It's on the side of the farmland.
Got it.
Mm-hmm. No, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Not one on RPC.
Got it.
So great segue here. The other part, and it's in the board packet as well, is the construction notice for the work in the downtown area. That's Robert Parker Coffin, Archer Road, and Three Lakes, both drive-in court. As part of that, Robert Parker Coffin at the intersection of Route 83 is going to be closed for two weeks, starting on Monday. So this is the first, you know, maybe 400 or 500 feet right from the intersection going west, and there's going to be detour signage to route motorists around that to get in and out of downtown. So trustee Kritzmeyer, thank you for the comments, and we'll work with the contractor to get, you know, the necessary signage up. And then the other thing that President Jacob had mentioned, and we're still working with the township to see if there might be an opportunity to use their electronic message board as well, just to kind of highlight motorists as well. We're thinking of putting that probably the intersection of 53 and Robert Parker Coffin, you know, as people are traveling east and entering the downtown area. So that'll be closed for two weeks, working with the contractor. Hopefully, Mother Nature cooperates and we can truncate that time just a little bit and get that open, but planning on two weeks. Moving on, Checker Road, for the traffic calming, the speed tables have been installed, and the necessary signage for, you know, alerting motorists of them has been installed for both directions. Elytownship has also gotten the speed limit signs, I believe, and is putting those up as well.
Thank you, Jeff, because I drove by on Sunday, and there was no markings if you were going west. So thank you. I'm glad.
Yeah, Deputy Oaks got me on Saturday on that, and another head-scratcher, if you will. Yeah.
Can I ask a question? What is the design criteria for that speed table? Like, so if you do 25 miles an hour and you hit this thing, what's supposed to happen? You're supposed to like flow through it, or if you hit 26 miles an hour, are you supposed to bottom out, or, I mean, what is the target for those particular speed tables and what kind of attention, or what is, what is the trigger that sort of going, oh, this thing's too fast? What are they actually supposed to do, and at what point? Is it tolerance or urgent on it?
Yeah, I can look up the data sheets and stuff like that and provide them, but, you know, at 25 miles an hour, you're not supposed to either bottom out or get airborne on them. Also, I believe, without looking, looking it up, that's good up to 40 miles an hour, but let me, I can look that up. I don't want to misquote something on that specific of a question.
If you get a moment, I'd appreciate it. Do I test them today? I'm trying to decide what they're supposed to do at 25.
Does it get airborne?
Yep.
Yeah, but at 25, it's pretty uncomfortable.
Oh.
I wasn't, you know, I wasn't expecting that. I was expecting it to be uncomfortable at 25, or comfortable at 25 and maybe uncomfortable.
If you have a truck, you can just blow right through it, so...
Well, I've got some clearance, but it's still pretty uncomfortable. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, number seven on the report, the Village Hall expansion. Things are underway at the, at last week's meeting, I think it was the Historical Society meeting or the downtown meeting. I apologize if I don't know which one it was, but there was discussion about the, moving the Ruth Barn and maybe the opportunities to move it downtown, you know, by a different route or a thing, or, you know, maybe lower the height of it somehow, some way on a trailer. So we're kind of looking into some of those options as well, just to see if there's another way, a more efficient way to get it downtown. Then B, 7B on the report, soil borings and the septic design are ongoing so that we can meet the schedule that we'll present at the last board meeting.
So Jeff, is it...
Yeah.
Is, is, is the, between the lines that the Historical Society has a preference for moving that barn to next to the other building?
I have a whole report to give.
Oh, okay, great.
Okay.
Okay, great.
All right, I will defer to trustee O'Reilly on that. That's the highlights of the Engineers Report. If there's any questions, happy to take them.
Yeah, my finance radar had a question on 9B, the new pump.
That's my question, too.
So, yeah, 9B, the distribution pump, and just to kind of backfill this, is the smallest of the distribution pumps at the Well House. We're looking to get quotes on that, but this is something that's going to be probably in the $3,000 to $5,000 range.
Oh, okay. Now you made me feel better. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My question on it is, is it easy to get, not to wait, just to get it before there's a crisis?
Yep.
So is that what you're gonna do?
Yes, yes, we're, we've, uh, we actually reached out to, uh, some of the pump manufacturers, yeah, about a week and a half ago to get quotes. We're, we're waiting on them, everybody's kind of, kind of a little bit underwater, pun intended at this point in time. So we, we keep pushing up on that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
For me.
All right, thank you.
All right, end of report.
All right, thank you. Um, so the next item on the agenda is discussions consideration of an extension of the lease agreement between the Village and the Eila Soccer Club. Um, is Doug Anderson, hey Doug, thanks for being here, thanks. Um, at the last meeting, um, there were various questions that, uh, were asked, um, about the, um, about the soccer field, right? Um, and, um, uh, and so, uh, we asked, you know, Doug these questions, he responded. We have a, uh, a written, uh, email from him with all those responses, and I didn't know if anyone wanted to discuss that or, or not, or ask.
Where was that?
What, pardon?
Where was this letter?
Thirteen B in the packet.
Um, I guess I, I was really chagrined to find out that, you know, it, it just seems like such a waste if it's supposed to be getting water from Menards, although, um, I, I don't know what your investment would be to get the money, to get the water from Menards to the grass, there would probably be some cost in, in all of that, so that was unfortunate. I think, could you clarify a little more the question about additional uses? What's feasible, what's not, what's reasonable, what's not?
It's hard to determine that. Um, the, I think, so we were, what, eleven years, I believe, to the agreement? Um, when we proposed that we moved the property, it was covered weed. I think in the, in the, uh, tax or in the responsive, um, kind of gave background on it, um, that it was developed by the Village Soccer Field. Um, it's that they've been for a number of years, but they need, um, there was no grass on the field, period. Um, so it took us about a year, year and a half to actually get some grass growth on it without water. Um, in that timeframe, I mean, we've worked with Menards numerous times to try to get this water, to get access to the well. Our understanding from the previous village manager before Greg was that the village was supposed to have access to it, and he worked on it, we worked with legal department at Menards to try to get water on it. Um, once we did actually get grass growth on it, the first season after we played on it that winter, someone drove ATVs across the field and damaged the field. Um, the gates were then put up, um, at the two parking lots and entrances. Um, it all heavy happened, um, they've gotten ATVs through the wooded tree line. Um, and then also residents, uh, from the apartment buildings across Lakook Road have been on the property numerous times. They dragged the gold across the field, they've had pickup trucks on the field. Um, so, you know, obviously, the use of the facility could, I mean, it, it's possible. It's just, it has to be managed so that it just doesn't damage anything that's put into the field.
Thank you.
Um, yes, I understand correctly, um, so far you've spent how much?
About three, over three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
Just three seventy.
Yeah.
How much of that is grass cutting versus value add?
Value add, um, uh, improvements to the site.
So we planted grass, they pat dry, sanded, pretty much every single year, hopefully we would get a wet spring. Um, we've had one year out of eleven that it's actually worked, so I would say some of that wasted money since we just don't have water. Um, probably, the parking lot costs a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We were required to put a final asphalt layer on the parking lot that was the true rating. Um, we've continued to still coat the parking lot, um, to keep up for extended life of it as well. Um, I, I would know the exact amount of that.
So, so three seventies, your all-in number, a hundred and twenty-five is parking lot pavement?
Grass doesn't cost as much if you're a contractor, but a landscape company that does all of our field assemblies are in your part.
So roughly, what's your maintenance cost per year without, you know, without paving or spraying the driveway or the parking lot?
I have to look, I don't know that number.
What's your season, please, Doug?
Um, we do fall, summer, and spring, so we go usually the weekend after, um, Easter, and then we go all the way through the second weekend of November. And there's, there's obviously summer, summer weeks where we don't use the fields at all during the summer.
There was a, um, an ask, um, by, um, Trusty Jamil about the possibility of, uh, having other uses, um, like cricket or something like that, right? Um, is that something you'd be open to in working with other organizations to use it? Or is it, is it just difficult to do that, you know, every weekend there's something going there?
I don't know anything about cricket, so I don't know what else to claim or what's left for it. Well, so the problem with lacrosse is, and Eila Township has had the same issue with the field office one, too, is football uses, um, not park in Lacerick, and then lacrosse is using it in the terrain. Well, lacrosse would destroy the field. And then, um, football would spend money to fix it back up again, and the township went and bought additional land, and now lacrosse is off those fields, and it's just strictly for football. Um, our use is, and we pretty much use that park every single weekend and every single day during the week in our season timeframe. So I don't know if there should necessarily be time, but I know the, um, work reserve did do a walk, um, and they need a larger parking lot, we've worked with the village managers, or any of the other companies. On this facility, too. It's just hard, it's, it's hard with the wear on the field.
My ignorance. But why, why, why can't Menards be persuaded to? That doesn't, doesn't cost them anything, does it?
I, I think there's gonna be some cost to bring the water to the field, right? It's not, they need a pipe to go to the, from the store to the field, right?
No, so, I didn't answer that.
Yeah.
They just do not want to cooperate, period. So we've offered to pay for a bigger well pump, we've offered to pay for the water to the facility, it's right there, it's right at the end of the parking lot.
Right, right.
They're refusing for any, anything. We, we got to the manag, the manager in the VPA facilities, um, I can't remember his name, um, we had it all set up, that the irrigation company, the well company, um, our landscape company, our, our volunteer that handles fields, everything was coordinated so that they would be at midnight, um, during the week at, at the pump. Um, and the manager comes out and just yells at everyone saying that no one will ever have access to his pump.
Thank you, Jamie. So.
What's our, what's our ability to enforce?
I, I don't know what the village's involvement has been. I, I know that the soccer club has, uh, attempted to do it, but I think that the village has.
We tried to get Dave and Greg and other folks involved.
So I, I don't know what the level of communication is and what the responses were, but I mean, at least in terms of the documentation, we have the ability to get it and presumably to enforce it.
That was my original understanding.
Yeah, it, it just, it, it seems like it's just such a shame to put them through this conversation.
It's gotten to the point, though, it's, it's almost to the point where you're even not safe to play on it because we need to get water to grow grass.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a beautiful park, we want, we want to use it. Um, and it, I think this was the end solution was for us just to put in a well, not have to deal with Menards.
I mean, is there a benefit to the village long-term as well to have that well there?
It, it, it might be, like, if we ever decide that, you know, at the end of the next lease, that we want to turn that into some sort of farmer's market, public thing.
Right.
You know, connect to the greenway.
I won't fear at the end of the next lease, so.
It's optimistic.
It's too long, it's just too long, twelve years is way too long. And, you know, I'm sorry to interrupt, you're done. We, we've got a lot of moving pieces. Um, if they do build a better stadium, it's a great spot for a hotel. Kind of off the beaten path a little bit, but a good spot for a hotel. Um, it's a valuable piece of property, they put the stadium in rather than heights, not just a field, you know, if you move a field along the hill or somewhere. It's something that's not as commercial as mine. I think twelve years is really good all the time. Plus, has village staff tried to shop this thing at all? To see if there's any other value that we could, that we can get out of this beside kind of a, a very reasonable, but still, um, some other, other options for us to shop this field out, or to, to the point about the cricket?
Well, maybe a way, a way to bring both sides together on that is, at least for, for example, at least for ten years, maybe the first right of refusal on whatever would possibly come up before that. You know, to give them first, first go at it, if someone else is coming.
Yeah, I, I just think we've got a lot of options that we can consider, and I think a lot of those are internal discussion.
Well.
Well, I, I would, I would like to understand why Menards is, what, what we can do to help this situation, since that is not the agreement. They, what I'm hearing is the village don't have a right to deny these people access to the water.
You know, I'm, I, yeah, we have to check with Vic, obviously. I thought, I thought the sewer recapture was clearly known, but I don't know what happened with the water.
It's, it's in the agreement.
Yeah, we, we actually have a specific right to do so. We have certain expenses we have to pay for it, but we don't have any recapture obligation to make access to it.
What's going to be worth another attempt? Maybe most of them build, he can meet John.
You, you guys are all laughing, that's not very nice.
He could take Dana with him, the two of you, taught them to do something.
I would love to do that. I am, I am candidly concerned that, you know, earlier in tonight's meeting, we talked to Ms. Chris Meyer, Chris Meyer, about eighteen months with Abbott, trying to arc twist arms. They don't have that time for a season. So I, I understand your concern about the length of the lease, but I also, I, I like, I think it's a shame we're in this conversation.
So again, I'll just remind you, there is a benefit of having a park there.
Yeah, there's benefit of having a park, personally.
There is a benefit to having a park there.
Yes.
I thought there's benefits owning the land.
No.
No, no, it's, it's having the park.
Having a park.
Yeah, there's a benefit.
If you could get water from Menards to that, would you prefer?
That's in our preference for eleven years. I, I don't, I don't want to put in a well, I mean, it's, I think it's eighty thousand dollars for the well.
Right.
Of course, but it's gotten to the point now that it, it's not possible, I think. Um, whoever the village manager was before Greg.
It was, yeah.
I think Dave mentioned to us that the only possibility now with the village would be to actually sue Menards to enforce the contract or enforce the agreement. And we're at that point now, we, we just don't have the time, we want to use the field, and I think it would enhance, it, it would definitely enhance the park for longer, you know, after our agreement's over, if we don't extend or you guys don't extend again with us, you then have beautiful soccer fields with an irrigation system, with a well that can be used for anything at that point.
Right, but I don't understand why it would be up to you to enforce an agreement that the village has with Menards.
Oh, I think what he said was Dave said the village would have to help, so.
Is that the question?
Well, I, I mean, if Menards is simply saying no, notwithstanding the agreement, then I, I think that is the only way we would be able to enforce the agreement.
So the agreement is with the village?
Yeah.
Okay, just play, play it in here. So if we had trucks show up and, and start digging to connect to their connection, what, what recourse do they have?
Well, we'd have to make the connection, as I recall, on their property, so.
Oh, thank you for that.
It actually, yeah, their well has to be shut down for two hours to pull the pump out.
Oh.
And then there's issues with their fire suppression system. There, there is a whole list of things that have to be taken into consideration, which again, that's why the manager agreed to midnight. Because the store is shut down, they have zero people inside the store for safety reasons.
I see.
But then him coming out and just outright denying us was, especially after, I mean, we'd hate those guys to be there, too, so.
Sure, sure.
I mean, I'm sympathetic, you, you probably exasperated and say, at this point, I feel more in control if we can put our own well in.
Correct.
Or a well in on the village property we leave.
Okay, so I have another fun idea to throw out here. Okay, so if the, if the issue is the twelve years, right? And the soccer field needs to make an investment. Now, I know this may not seem like a, a good business decision, but if we needed to break the lease after a certain period of time, could we reimburse for part of the well?
I was wondering that also.
Yeah, I mean, we, we.
Document had something on.
Again, the document in front of you tonight, which was originally prepared based on the notion that the village was simply looking to extend the caretaking responsibilities of the property, um, so I think it probably needs to be tinkered with under any circumstance. But we could certainly say that the lease is a twelve-year lease, that the village has the right to terminate the lease beforehand with some amount of notice, and that there can be an amortization, uh, schedule tied to the cost of the well that if we terminate it early, there'd be some reimbursement for, uh, the cost based on that amortization schedule. I mean, that's not at all unusual, it's just a matter of if that's the direction the board wants to pursue.
That makes sense to me. I think the current thing has a one-year notification on the lease, and so, you know, if there is some better, higher use that is in the village's interest, and that could, we could make that economically fair, or economically agreeable, I guess, fair as in the eyes of the holder. Wouldn't that make you more comfortable, Chris?
My, my second concern is the village not being able to use it under, while it's under lease. I really think we, since we own it, we ought to have the ability to put Ripfest out there on a weekend if we wanted to.
And I think if we give up our rights under the lease, we give up our rights under the lease, and I think that's unfair to the two thousand four hundred homes that don't use soccer.
Okay, so we could add another clause to the agreement that with the, um, on, on off days or whatever, periods of time, that with the permission of the soccer club, that we could use the field for something like that, put that in the lease if they're agreeable.
Not exactly. They'll have to kind of tell them to give it to me.
Doesn't give them the authority.
There has to be a mechanism that we can say in two months, we need, we need some days for some event. Not asking for it, but.
Just have no right to do that.
I think it's gonna.
Under, under conditions.
They're, they're gonna have to have, yeah, they're, I would, as a, as a mother of somebody playing a lot of sports, you, you remember that, like, those schedules are well in advance.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't want to be a hindrance to their scheduling, but on the other hand, I don't want to beg either.
Right.
That's reasonable.
But in what other lease instance does the owner move in with you, so to speak?
Well, we're not paying anything. Not paying anything. They're, they're not paying anything for the lease, right?
Yeah. But they're maintaining it, they're maintaining it. If you have a ripfest, you're gonna ask.
But that's the current terms with this particular lease holder. Will you see, we sort of?
Lefty.
Thank you.
Left door.
Well, what if we shop this, and we find another tenant who says, hey, I got a better field for you guys, I'll use my soccer field as soccer field twelve weekends a year, or after that, I don't care what Long Grove uses it for, and we'll figure out how to put that irrigation in the water. I mean, we, we haven't shopped it, we don't know if this is.
So, so can I?
I'm not inclined to shopping, I'm not.
I, I don't know that.
Can I, can I ask, can I ask Doug to talk about, who are the people that you, the people that use the field? The parents, kids, where do they come from?
So there's, uh, a hundred and twenty-five, um, families from Long Grove and, and Lacerick, um, Hawthorne Woods, Eila Township.
So all from Eila Township?
Our organization covers, uh, it's Eila Soccer Club that covers Eila Township.
Okay.
So what's your total?
Total players?
Players, families, whatever your count of units of.
We have thirty-eight. Hundred rap kids and six hundred travel kids, just say, so twelve hundred.
Thank you.
So, that was my reference to the twenty-four hundred some odd homes that don't play soccer. Right, because I, I was.
The other side of it, yeah, so the other side of it too is, I mean, we work with Lake Zurich, we utilize parks in Lake Zurich, Ela Township, Deer Park. Um, they, they had discussions of charging per residency or non-residents because of the parks that we provide to, to Long Grove residents participate in our program. Um, and we do not charge an extra fee for utilization of Lake Zurich parks. And we've done that by, we've been using, you know, your, your facilities, we utilize the facilities in the other towns. We, we try to make it so that it's all Ela Township instead of each individual town. So, by utilizing those parks that actually benefits your residents as well. Um, and I know a number of parents go and shop at Menard's on Saturdays after they have their kid's soccer games. So, you guys do take a benefit of the tax revenue as well there.
Well, that's the same, same deal as just parks that go east onto the school district. If you, if you're in the school district, you, you can play in the park. It's, it's, it's all the long stuff. Um, and, and, and that's, I think, the point that, that Chris and I both have is that it's, it's, it's the residents, whether you're on that side of the line or, or this side. And, and to keep it specifically from you, this isn't quite set totally right. That's true. Somehow, we need to make some allowance for other things other than soccer. Another great soccer thing. Um, and, and, and I've kind of investigated all the various soccer clubs that are around, including Schwab's. Um, and I just think we, we need to be, be able to do something else. Well, okay, I'm gonna throw a double advocate thing in here. What have we done to shop London Field?
You don't own it.
Park District, say what you can.
We gave it to the park district.
Well, that's if you, that was the conversation the last time.
So, you don't have money to fund it?
Well, the, the.
What do you do?
The, uh, the, the balls leagues that are there maintaining the field. But that was what Kent was saying. I, I hope he's okay. His wife's okay or somebody. But he was saying that they didn't, the park district didn't want to, maybe you said it, Chris, didn't want to maintain that property. And so, this was very convenient to have the soccer club take it over. And they've been maintaining it for, is it ten years now? However many years it's been, right? It's worked out well. So, I mean, if, if there was a way to open it up more where, and I don't know what their schedule is, how tight it is, but there would be a certain number of days that could be accessible to the village for specific things and we could work it out, would that be agreeable to you, Chris, or the rest of the board? And, and, and in return, they would put the water in, they would, uh, and we'd work out an agreement where there was separation of the lease that, uh, you know, we would reimburse them for some of the money to put that well in. But, uh, it would, you know, you would have that ultimate flexibility. I think there's gotta be a way to make it work where all sides here can come together.
I'd like to see us try and make it work. I mean, I, I, I hear you on the shopping. I also think, you know, we have a good tenant.
Oh, I do. I do. It's not about, it's not about this is a bad thing. I'm wondering if there's something a little better that we have in the country. That's what I'm trying to say, right? Personally, I know the whole, the whole story with the soccer field.
Yeah, and, and you may have, uh, I can't remember, Chris, because I know you, you had like two different stents here on the board, but, um, when the village acquired this, I think it was in about two thousand and five, the, the village had initially tried to develop it and realized the trouble and expense and actually did shop it before, uh, the Ela Soccer Club came into the scene. And there was not the level of interest to do it in a way that was satisfactory to the village. So, um, that doesn't mean it can't be shopped again, uh, but it's, um, it, it was not, it was a bit of a white elephant in terms of trying to get somebody to take it on initially. And so, uh, you know, I think that, A, there's probably value, given the conversation of the board, to have some further conversations with the U.S. Soccer Club to see if something can be worked out. If the board also wants to direct staff to explore other potential, uh, lesses of the property, that's something that the board can, can direct as well. Um, I don't think that we're in a position, from what I'm hearing, to move forward tonight. And I would assume, under any circumstance, we'd want to make sure that the extension is more particular, that it's tied to the installation of a, of an irrigation well, which the draft in front of you did not have as part of it, since it was viewed as a, an extension of a caretaker responsibility.
How do we decide what that, what that model looks like from a, I don't, I don't say economic perspective, but you know, for a second, three hundred, I, I'm sorry, sixty-five thousand and then eighty-five thousand in the irrigation? And what happens in twelve years? Who owns all that improvement? Is it us?
Oh, yeah, it would be our property like any other leasehold, that, uh, that the permanent improvements are village improvements. Um, so we would get the, the depreciated value of that.
There was something in the original lease, wasn't there?
There was a recapture for it.
Yeah.
At fifty-three kings for them.
There was, okay, here, Exhibit D in the original, a condemnation schedule. So, there's basically, yeah, an.
Yeah, that was.
An amortization of, of a cent.
They, we can't accept, we can't lose sight of the fact that they are a good tenant.
Yeah, they're, they're good tenants.
And they, and, and they serve a great population.
I mean, to your point.
I, honestly, so I'm a real estate agent who I think has, for, and you know. My viewpoint is that we've looked at land to buy. Um, there's a couple of parcels we are looking at buying. I don't have the time. I'm expecting a baby. I have already a two-year-old. I don't have time to develop soccer fields. So, this land is already developed. I prefer to spend it for the long term by ability of the organization to buy our own land, put a well in there, put an irrigation system in there. I don't think twelve years is long enough. I agreed to twelve years. That's what our board voted on to come back to you guys with. Um, so, I mean, that, that's my viewpoint of it is, is that I prefer to see our own facility. But you guys have this beautiful facility already built. It's crowned by Forest Deserve. It's actually pretty easy accessibility to our players in Lake Zurich, in Long Grove. I mean, your residents love when they get practice time at Long Grove that they don't have to drive out to Hoppern Woods. So, you know, driving out to Hoppern Woods at five o'clock during the night, it's a half hour drive. So, I mean, again, I, I think it's beneficial to the organization. It's beneficial to you guys for this. That's why we came back to you first to propose this, at least my board was too, so.
Do you think they would be amenable to that sort of, uh, you know, give this down that?
The issue with the other uses is I know how much we've spent on fixing people's damage that they've done to the field.
Okay.
So, if there's a way that the village can guarantee that. The problem is, once we designate fields for per season, we don't have much flexibility of moving fields. We, now, the way that soccer is, there's four different field sizes. So, we don't have, back in the day, there were only full-size big soccer fields everywhere and it was easy to move games. Now, there's four fields. There's holes that have to be moved. So, once we submit schedules to lease, we are limited on that field size. And in this area, we have pretty much two field sizes per age group for games. So, if one field damaged by, you know, residents from across, or it's not one, residents, palace residents that come across and if they drag field, you know, holes across the field and create huge broads that are damaged, that can cause injuries to kids, that's first us then on our ability to, so I'm all for it. You know, Lake Zurich uses their parks. We use their parks. Um, we, we have a great relationship with Lake Zurich, same with Deer Park. Um, we're not saying no. It's just, it's, we just don't want to have to deal with damage if there's not some type of management behind it. And I think, I mean, we worked well with, um, Greg and the Forest Deserve that now they're using the back section of the parking lot. Um, they moved the gate up further because the Forest Deserve needed more parking. We didn't say no. We just said that that gate needs to be kept closed so cars are not driving across the field. So, I mean, we're open to anything. Again, we're a youth organization. We're not for profit. We don't make money. We just want kids to play soccer.
Can I just ask, ask a quick questions with hopefully a quick answer? If.
You're not gonna ask me that?
Okay.
Go, go ahead, Bobby.
Okay, if we own, if we owned it and maintained it and used it and we were getting damaged from across the road, what would we do?
Uh, our choices would be to police it more, to put more effective barriers in, um, to try to prosecute anyone if we caught them. But, you know, that's a very much happenstance kind of thing. And I think even, even with the soccer club, if they identify somebody out there who's not supposed to be, they still have to call the police, have the police respond, catch them, and then prosecute them. So, I mean, there's enforcement's a, a tough, a tough thing.
But, but you did your, your attorney twist there. People who are not supposed to be there are different to people damaging the property. Right? So, as a resident, I want to be able to walk on and say, hey, grandkids, we can go kick the ball at, at our field. I don't want to be thrown out of a public park because I don't belong to the lease. Damage completely given.
Sorry, I agree. We could find, we could find people by, by flying drones and tracking them and cameras or.
Boom the shooter in the woods, right? So, um.
We can put a flock camera there.
You can put all the lessons.
You knew that was coming.
So, I think you, you need your legal.
No, I, no, I, I, I think that the, the issue of what do we do if we want people to stay off? I, I, that's what I was referring to. And in terms of enforcement of any of that, there's always a, there's always a challenge with enforcement.
But stay off or damage, you did it again. I, I mean, I want to encourage people to walk the park and kick the ball with kids or play cricket. If they want to hit the cricket, stick around or wicket, whatever they call them.
Okay, so it really comes down to barriers.
Either barriers or stepped up enforcement, both of which have an expense and a challenge to them.
Okay.
All right, so let's, let's, so it's nine o'clock. Um, we have maybe a couple more things to address here. Um, is there any type of conclusion that can be made tonight? Um, or is it something that the board, is there enough people on the board that would be agreeable to have Art or Dana, whatever, work with Doug and the club to see if there's any other derivative, like we talked about tonight, of a schedule that may allow a certain amount of days during the summer that the village could use it? Um, uh, there would be some kind of a, where they would pay to put the well in, but if we terminated the lease, then we would, you know, reimburse them for part of it. And just come up with a solution so that they can move forward and take some of the board and keep this, you know, club going.
Those two, I would be in favor of, of asking staff on those two angles.
Okay.
And, and, and I, I would consider ten years.
Ten years, okay. Okay.
I think what we need to do before we extend the lease is to put out there, for the interest of that, for when we see, see if any shopping around, if somebody else is interested, give a certain amount of time, maybe for two, before we finalize it. That could open up, that's how others are saying, that if not only the soccer field, somebody else might be interested to maintain it, then we can give it and then get some lease amount to the village that can profit the village. That should be also taken into consideration. And then, if nobody else shows up, of course, I'm not opposed to Ela Soccer Club maintaining it and then put a provision for the village to have a say if we have to have any other event, like Ripfest or cricket or something else, that should be included in the lease. That's my thought.
How, how long would you give to get that done?
We should put it out there.
I mean, I would, you're talking thirty days?
So, there are a lot of cricket clubs out there in Buffalo Grove. I know they seek grants of time. So, if they are interested to maintain it on their own and get some money to the village, it should be expensed.
Are you sorry, uh, to thirty days?
I would put, because he is, uh, at, at least a fortnight, maybe, two weeks.
That's, I, I, I just don't want, I mean, we've got a new baby coming, you know, let's keep moving.
I, I just, yeah.
I want that coming, so all there's is two months.
I, I just, I, you know, it, it doesn't. You know, I remember having a conversation with somebody who were like, oh, should I propose to my first girlfriend? You could shop.
I need someone to.
You could say, you know what, I'm really happy with this particular partnership.
I'm very comfortable getting everybody together and just sort of bouncing ideas back and forth. I, and Doug, I, I get it. It's a great program. I understand. I've been around. I've seen it from, from day one when the board passed it to the park board, or tried to pass it to the park board and turned it back. I get that.
So, can Dana grab hold of this and, and, and?
I just think the board.
Please, please note, we're, we're about to be down staff and we've got an interim manager and he's sick.
And reaching out to couples, you know, and just, you know, doing a little bit of shopping, I'm all for that too. I think we could do it in parallel.
We can meet, or we can meet Doug and get some options and.
Why not contact the cricket club or organization? See if there's any of them.
Rita, you've been quiet.
I didn't get a word in edgewise. Um, uh.
That's not normal.
I'm, I'm all for a discussion. I, I think that it's difficult. These soccer clubs have the lease until twenty twenty-six. So, if we shop it, it's something three years from now. That, what's the likelihood? You know, I would like, they've been good tenants. They've been good caretakers. The, it's a worthy cause, uh, benefits us in several ways. So, I would like to see if we can work something out. You know, sit down, have a, you know, whatever.
And, and one thing to keep in mind is the ultimate outcome of the extension is that the village has a termination right. There'd be nothing that would preclude the village to start shopping it, but there's a consequence. It, you know, there might be an amortization payment.
Right.
So, I, I think that the immediate approach might be, uh, if I'm hearing the conversation right, is to explore both, uh, a, a mechanism to have an immedi, or, uh, an early termination with potentially a, an amortization payment based on whatever the investment is. And secondly, to identify opportunities for village use that, and, and it could be uses such as consistent with soccer, you know, with the soccer field, uh, provided there's no damage, you know, something as, as, as safe forward as that. Um, to explore whether that's something that's amenable to the club and whether there can be some kind of meaning of the mind. So, that, I mean, catching the drift of your conversation is what you're looking for now. And it doesn't preclude the opportunity to shop it around along the way.
Yep, you bring up a good point, Rita. This le, this lease is still out there.
Yeah, but the issue is, is that they need to do something for water, so.
And we actually have contractors lined up for the middle of November.
I hope there's that.
We started this, we started this in June with the village. So, that's not, it's not necessarily.
We didn't know that.
I, I, I understand. But we were trying to get it done during the winter so that we can use it for next fall. Otherwise, we lose all spring and potentially the summer. It, it's just a timing issue at this point. And our lease does expire in twenty twenty-six. And again, it goes back to my idea that I want to buy land so it would take us two years to develop land out near kind of Hoppern Woods if we were to buy that parcel instead. So, there is some timing issue here as well.
They would dig in November?
Yes, that's what we were told. They actually prefer to do it the beginning, middle of November.
So, we need to respond to you in a timely manner so you can follow through on it.
Does that give us enough time to have a serious conversation with Menard's or not? We still need to check with Menard's.
I, I mean, the other option for us there is the village put, gets Menard's to do the well or you guys sue Menard's to perform, to give us access, or you guys put in the well. You guys, you guys put in the irrigation system and, and we just rent the field year to year. And if you have someone else comes along who wants to rent the field.
Yeah, I mean, to that point, that puts us in the business of maintaining our field.
I, I don't want to own a water system.
I, 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 we already do and I'm not happy about it.
Yeah, so, so an irrigation system.
No, I, I agree. I agree. I mean, that, that is fair. Like, we could put that in, then we run it and then we charge you something for it, you know, but.
After, after.
And then they buy them, and they go place somewhere.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, you do realize we have nothing planned.
I already understand.
So, it's all just.
It's a sleep.
I'm trying to be a curmudgeon here.
Uh, okay, so we're, we're stuck here. We're gonna have to, this is gonna go circular. Let's. Uh, okay, so we're, we're stuck here, we're gonna have to, this is gonna go circular, let's, Dana.
Dana, grab it.
Abbott, let's try to figure out, I mean, I, I want to make this work, it's, you know, I, I...
I, I, I don't have interest in trying to make us wait for a Menards conversation.
Okay.
Is it something we said?
Everything.
Likewise. All right.
I'll resign tonight if you're taking over.
All right, uh, moving right along, um, thank you. Thank you, Doug, for being here, so, uh, good luck, baby. All right, so, um, the only thing, I, I was trying to find it, the, this weekend, Sunday, is the open, open space, is it open space or open lands, open space? At Herons Creek, there is gonna be a...
Oh, I did see that, yeah. It's an email from Barbara, maybe.
Yeah, from Barbara, I couldn't find the email, so I...
Can we do a blast?
Yeah, we should, we should get a blast of it out there, so if you can...
What is it that you want?
Um, we have a, there's a, an event happening, uh, open space, open lands, over at the Herons Creek, and Barbara Clip has the invitation.
Shelter B.
Shelter B, yeah, so that, we want to invite residents to, to attend. Yeah, okay, that's all I have from my report, trustee Barowski.
Uh, SLOCO meeting canceled due to lack of agenda, I notice, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jamil.
Okay.
Nothing? Okay, uh, trustee Kritzmeyer.
Uh, we've set a date, the auditor has the final stuff that they need. We've set a date to review the final audit, I think it's November 2nd, so hopefully it'll be then in front of the village that November, whatever that first November meeting is.
Yeah, I'm not gonna...
I mean, they've already filed the extension, they're normally due at the end of October, they've already filed it for end of December, so we're covered.
Perfect, thank you, trustee O'Connor. Um, trustee O'Reilly.
Um, after our last meeting, um, Kent and I got a meeting together with the historical society, and, um, Amy and I looked at that, and a couple of important things. I know that we're going to move the barn, that's for sure. Um, but I am not convinced where to go. Um, but one of the things that came up, which we had discussed, was the sending of... And the consensus of our group was that if you move the barn to downtown, you take the schoolhouse with it. Um, and, and that was, that was for three movements. Um, it would be the, the, um, uh, farmhouse, the barn and the schoolhouse, which would be a real draw.
What about the outhouse?
So, you'd have a campus.
We'd take the barn, and we'd give it to...
You'd have a campus.
Sorry, Bobby.
You're charming, you can see, you can see.
Yeah, I can't flush though, but anyways, go ahead.
Um, and, and, um, that, that would be just a, a wonderful focus for the village. Um, we also discussed how important that barn and that schoolhouse is to Long Grove. And, and, and that's why they have an appointment, and, not an appointment, a meeting on Thursday. No, tomorrow. Tomorrow, okay. Um, and, and you know that Jane's the president of the historical society. And one of the things that I'd like to see us say is that we know we have to move the barn, but exactly where we're going to move the barn and how we're going to move the barn be determined on another day. Um, that, that these, these things can run simultaneously. We know it's a huge, huge, um, issue to get, to get it done. And, um, some of the possibilities, one is grants. Now, you feel as if there are grants available.
I hope, I'm willing to work that.
Yes. Um, one possibility is a fundraiser with residents coming up with some money. And the third grant is our, but I hope would be possible as a last resort. If we were close to, to accomplishing and, and, and didn't have exactly the amount of money we needed, and that would be if the village could loan them the money to be paid back in a certain amount of time. Um, I know Doug has, has done this, you're an engineer.
Yeah, not a civil engineer, a local engineer.
Okay, that's close enough. It's done this...
Sorry, I have one of those, they're not.
I know, I, I know they're not, I am a biomedical engineer, so I know it's not the same person. Um, but, but he did, he did and draw this, um, where the schoolhouse was, where is the schoolhouse?
Is that what this is?
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's up here in the, in the left.
Okay.
And then, um, Doug had also taken these pictures, the most, the most intriguing one is the base. Where, oh, it's not here. It's, it's the, the under the barn.
Barn?
You know, underneath the other, because it's, it's a tree. So, I'll let Jane go ahead, and, and, and I know she's got a, a lot of, um, things that... The underside of the barn is the, the, um, the beans are not mowed.
Well, they're, they're wooden beams, you know, basically, tree trunks underneath holding up the barn. So, you know, it's just part of the character of how they built farms, that is, that. Having a grave, you can actually look underneath to the construction, not only inside the building and outside, but underneath, you get, you know, the feel of how things were done at that, a great historical truth to have.
And it cannot be on a, it cannot sit on a slab, it will not sit level on a slab.
Because, you know, if you put it on slab, you're gonna have, you know, probably decay, rot, et cetera, critters underneath there living, and, and there's nothing you can do to get rid of them because it'd be sealed. So, right now, having it down in piers, you know, is certainly the way to go, like we have today.
So, it comes down to money. The, the, the desire is to move it to downtown? Um, we aren't quite, to be honest, we aren't quite sure about that, that's gonna be a discussion in our meeting.
Right, right.
Here's our, our challenge is, so, it, that, that says take, you know, moving the barn over to the schoolhouse on the village property, wherever that is over there, um, there. Taking, you're, you're saying ta- take that off the table.
No, I'm not saying take it off.
Because that one comes with the long lead time with the Army Corps of Engineers.
I know that, and, and, but my point is that the four months is not gospel. It, it, it doesn't mean that we can't be running simultaneously, what is the death cost? Is it formidable? Can it be done? The same time we're applying for permits.
So, you're suggesting we, out of the, whatever the three options, I can't remember that Jeff showed, we pitch one and pursue two in parallel until we can come to a better decision? He had three options, I'm trying to remember what they were.
Hey, Jeff.
Option one is to simply move it to the schoolhouse. Option two is to take it apart and move it pieces over to the farmhouse and rebuild it. Option three is to move it in totality down the road.
Thank you, Jane, okay, so...
Believe me, I can read you.
Oh, so, okay, so, if, am I hearing correctly, you, you want to take option two off the table?
No, we want, we, I don't know, I don't, I don't want to speak to the board.
Oh, I see, okay.
I don't want to speak, because we have not had a, we haven't had a meeting since, and we have not had a board, we only have four meetings from us in this term. So, everybody, we, everybody's gonna get this board meeting, so we need to talk. There's a, you know, there's a number of people that, it's been a discussion for a long time, it'd be wonderful to have all the buildings together. We've actually talked to Ryan Messner too, um, and he is, like, totally on board because it would bring people into the village.
And Bobby, let me just make one comment too, so, one of the, you know, on our plan for this village hall, one of the things that has to happen is this barn has to move, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it has to move all the way over there, it could be just put off to the side.
Right.
We can find out, Jeff, how much that would cost, you can, you know, but we have a spot where we could probably park it, leave it there.
Well, the only problem with that is that it is a barn that was built in, what, the 1840s or something? So, multiple moves are probably not the best thing for it. But, but, but don't put a no, right, I'm saying it's not the best thing.
No, it would, it would be set up in a way, well, I just envision, I'm not a mover, I'm not an engineer, you're, you're engineers.
I have no clue, yeah, I have no...
I'm thinking that you, you put it up in a way so it's ready for movement, right? So, it's all shored up and everything else, and whatever stabilization, a big ribbon around it tying it up, and it gets set off to the side, so that when it's ready to be moved, it is ready to be picked up and moved over there, right? But it's, it's done in a way where you don't have to start all over and you don't damage it. I'm, I'm sure Jeff can speak to, as an engineer, Doug can speak to it as well, there's a way to do this where you're not gonna...
There's a way to find somebody who knows how to do it.
Know how to do it, yeah.
That's the important part, yes, that's, that's the important part. And, and a side benefit would be useful land for the future.
Sure.
For the village. It, it, it's not so practical right now, but twenty years from now, we may have totally different needs in, in whether that parking lot or a heliport. Um, it, it would be there, um, to use, and I know that the, the, uh, subject field is there. Maybe if we're not moving the barn up there, maybe if the schoolhouse isn't there, maybe the subject tank, subject field could be in a more practical place on the land to make a park, parking lot or a building more useful. So, it's a lot of this, a lot of this, but, but, um, as I, as I presented this group the other night, um, I've done some inspirational projects, favorite project that nobody knew I could do, and that was at, I forget what it's called now, the old Woodgrove School. Park District had no one, and I went to the park district and it said, "What's the first thing you need?" And I think it was five thousand yards of fill, and everybody just went around. So, I started, and this was before cell phones, and every time I'd see a pile of dirt, I'd call and say, "Could you donate it?" And I did that probably a hundred times, and I got to the point where I just automatically said, "Thank you for your time, I appreciate it." And one day, I hung up and I said, "Oh, my God, he said yes." And it was down at Sunday Grove, and they had all this fill. So, we got trucks, everybody who had a truck, village, township. We had a, a, a road going up Arlington Heights Road, and they, they brought five thousand yards. And then I said, "Well, what do we need now?" We need to grade it, you know, never guess how we graded it, the Navy SEALs. They came with their enormous, I don't even know what they're called, but they're, they're graders, and they played in that space for practice for the Navy SEALs.
Oh, wow.
And that's how we got a graded park. Took a year, but it does, so there's no reason this can't get done.
So, so, I guess, um, this has been put out there tonight, you're gonna have your board meeting tomorrow, right? Um, we'll get feedback, um, and then we'll be brought back before, it's probably at the next meeting, I don't... Whatever form it comes to us, okay.
Right, yes.
I don't want to be, I don't want to be that guy, but after we move it, then why? I mean, how do we protect it? You know, put a roof over it, and put an enclosure around it. What doesn't last forever?
The, 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 the same way the, the farmhouse.
Well, that means we got to do it or something, right?
Well, no, it took, it took several years to, to get the farmhouse done, which is the reason so many people in Long Grove have passed Buckley Moss in their...
What?
Have what?
Passed Buckley Moss, the artist.
Oh, I don't know, who's that?
He's an artist, he, he did, she, she, he did some pictures, some convictions.
Okay, that's all cool, but, I, you know, I think, so we go through the expense of moving it, we put it up, it's cool addition, it, it belongs up there. I think that makes sense. How do we protect it? That's really my next question. What's gonna rot, and the way it's sitting out here right now, is it doing it any good in the long term?
Actually, it's in really good shape.
What kind of wood is it made out of, does anyone know, is it cedar?
This was the thought, it's the same, you know, we go through...
That's pretty, pretty stable.
I mean, the other structure is very stable, you know, if you take a look at it, they're in great shape. Some of the outside boards look horrible, but, you know, we've, you know, gotten boards from old barns, uh, you know, that have been torn down and... Boards on the, uh, second floor.
And maintenance is, is our responsibility.
I understand that, I just, uh...
So, we start, I mean, and that's, it's not, you know, that's part of our fundraising, that, that we, we maintain all the buildings.
Okay, so are we at a good spot to stop here? So, um, I'm gonna keep us moving if we, thank you for that. Um, and I just had to say, when you were starting to talk about moving dirt, all I could think was the Grove, and thank God that wasn't the Grove. But anyways, um, back to the, the managers' report, is there any, uh, thing from Art that you want to share with us quickly? It's getting late.
Um, no, just, uh, call me or email me if you have any questions, thank you.
Thanks, Art.
Hope you get better than that.
Hope you feel better. Okay, so, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Uh, moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by trustee O'Reilly. Vote call?
Voice vote.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any names? All right, meeting adjourned, good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.